O'Brien. Nine present, zero absent.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, infinite and endless.
Proposed additions, deletions to the agenda or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion being done, roll call.
Councilmember Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Eggerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
We'll go to consent items, we call on Bernie Larson, City Clerk.
Mayor Reese, councilmembers, tonight I have for your approval the city council minutes of September 3rd, 24, city council work session minutes of August 28th, 24, the Police Civil Service Commission minutes of July 17th, 24, Municipal Utilities Commission meeting minutes of September 9th, 24, approved settlement and release agreements, the city versus Newbauer, consideration of resolution declaring surplus equipment and authorizing sale at public auction, preliminary and final plat approval for the fairgrounds section addition, preliminary and final plat approval for the girlies addition, consideration of a Sunday liquor license, and consideration of state temporary permit for Vinji Lutheran Church and the accounts payable report for 8/29/24 through 9/11/24. And for your information, tonight I have the monthly permit reports for August of 24, the director's reports, and the K C E D letter to council.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Rick?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just on item J, consideration of the state temporary liquor permit for Vinji Lutheran Church. Does that help the Luthifest go down better?
It's pretty offensive, other ones.
I approve that, so.
All right, roll call. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just have a comment. G and H, we are being asked to approve the preliminary and final plat, and there were no minutes from the planning commission with that. I understand them, but it just would be nice to be able to get the minutes to review and the comments that were made on them, so it's just a comment, I'm okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Eggerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Oss.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Next is the open forum, and I'll call on, we've got four people wishing to speak, I'll call on you individually, but then I would appreciate if you'd give your name, your address, and you have a three-minute limit. So first, I'll call Nancy Street.
Council, I'm sure you all know why I'm calling her in here, I've sent you many emails. I'm tired of the runaround to get my grass restored. You've gone on, you moved after projects, you look at how you finished the other properties in my area that are businesses, and we get crap. I had to fight to get my driveway completed for the winter, or else I wouldn't have had access. I had to fight to get holes filled in from the gas company because Bolton marked them as completed. I had to fight to get a pool removed from beside my driveway because they had marked it as completed and the gas company wouldn't come out to remove it. Listen to them when they did do my driveway, and they did it wrong, and the guy, head guy, said, "Oh, just leave it, she won't see it." I'm standing 10 feet above their head on my deck. And then he realizes I'm standing there, and they come back the next day and redo it. This is enough, it shouldn't have to be a battle to get your yard complete. I'm having work done this Saturday on stuff I've been putting off, and I'm telling you right now, it butts up right against where your problem is. I have my work done, and if you come in and mess up my work, you're paying for it, and you're paying for it by who I say will repair it. Do you understand that? Because that's what's going to happen, because I've had enough of fighting with you guys to get this done.
All right, next is Jean Lang.
I'm Jean Lang, and I came to live in Wilmer because I have two boys that live up here, and they live on Grace Avenue, and they are handicapped. And they have been assessed 15,000. We'd like to know where they're going to get the money. They worked out at Candy Shop Recycling, and that told us they haven't worked. They worked two days, two hours each day, out at Ronnie's in order to keep their insurance. And that's the only income they have. One of them is 65, and the other one is going to be, oh, I think he's 62 or something like that. But I don't know what we're going to do. And that street needed to be fixed when they moved into that house 30 years ago. Because my husband and I commented on what terrible streets Wilmer had compared to where I am originally, Lamberton, Minnesota. And they do their streets every five years. But I don't know what we're going to do. And we tried to explain this to the boys, one understands it, but the one just says, "Well, I don't know. I'm not moving." And I said, "No, you're not moving, your house is paid for, and it's your house, no one can take it from you." This is upsetting.
All right, Dennis Shaff Power.
Good evening, Mayor Reese, Wilmer City Council members. My name is Dennis Shaff Power, and I live at 1436 Grace Avenue Southwest. It has been brought to my attention that the Wilmer City staff will be recommending the dismissal of the original street assessment objective letters presented at the August 19th meeting based upon city policy. Two years ago, similar objection letters were presented to the city council for property owners living along Sixth Street Southwest. A friend of ours who lives along this street had the dollar amount of the special street assessment reduced. Has there been a change in the city policy regarding this subject since then? It may be worth asking city staff. So I guess the question is, why did our objection letters not meet city's policy standards, but those from two years ago did? Thank you.
All right, next, Justin Madder.
Thank you, my name is Justin Madder from 13th Street Southwest. Mayor Reese and councilmembers, thank you for taking the time to consider the objections of homeowners regarding the 2024 street assessments. It was clear at the August 19th meeting that numerous questions about the assessment amounts and its procedure continued to persist among the public and within the council itself. Having the opportunity to meet with engineering staff and several councilmembers for further conversation has raised even further questions. I believe that now is the time to finally make a change to a broken policy. Included with this letter is a list of questions that still remain or have come to light since the assessment hearing, as well as a springboard of possible ideas to be considered for corrective action. I hope that these questions, concerns, and ideas will be viewed not as rhetorical, but rather would unite both council and staff in a serious effort to bring forth a variety of options that could be considered to reduce assessments while still providing cash revenue to cover the costs of these much-needed street improvements. My ask remains the same as the original objection stated, a 33% reduction in the proposed assessment amounts for those who have objected, and a future restructuring of how assessments are calculated and handled. These requests are based on violation of state statute requirements which prohibit exceeding property benefit amounts and the misappropriation of outside funding sources which ought to reduce assessment amounts. Segmented below are some suggestions, followed by a list of inquiries and concerns, such as the mysterious $4 a month utility improvement charge that I hope council will seek to resolve before taking further action. Additionally, I would add that I recognize that Wilmer's struggle with special assessments is neither unique nor is it new. I encourage the city to look at how other communities have been able to find success in reducing, or in other cases, eliminating, street assessments. By raising dedicated funds through other means, the city could offset assessment amounts by 50 to 75%, and at the same time realize long-term savings by paying more cash upfront and bonding for lesser amounts. For example, this year's street reconstruction projects totaled $1.4 million worth of assessments. Raising $700,000 of dedicated revenue could cut these assessment amounts in half. Perhaps a hybrid of ideas could be combined to achieve a successful solution. So again, I think the council, I hope that tonight, as you're able to have this discussion later, that you would review the additional information. I think I provided two or three pages of possible ideas and additional questions that I do have that I hope council will take a look at. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to regular business and call on David Early from Westburgations for the audit for 2023.
Mayor?
Yes.
I know we don't normally respond to open forum questions, but Mr. Shaff Power brought up about the letters. Can we get a clarification on the, if the letters were not accepted? I was not aware of that, or what he was referring to on the assessments?
I think that'll all be addressed in the next item.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, Julie.
Go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. Happy to be here tonight to give you just a brief presentation of the audit, the 2023. First item I need, would like to go over just briefly is the governance letter. There's just a few things in here that I'd like to just highlight. In the first paragraph, under significant audit matters, there was an accounting policy change that you had to adopt that related to new ERP system you implemented. It didn't result in a big change in how you do things, but I just wanted to point out that you were subject to a new audit standard. The other one I'd like to look at is the line that's a difficult piece to encounter for performing the audit. We didn't have any significant issues with any people. Everyone was very cooperative, answered our questions, and provided the information we had. Really, the main challenge we had was just learning the new system and just what it took to kind of reconcile the old and the new. Outside of that, no real issues on that. Otherwise, I have a few graphs just to kind of go over quickly. The first one here, we're just showing a little bit of a trend for your general fund and capital and improvement fund. Every year, your budget has had a deficit as you planned because you wanted to spend down your fund balances a little bit. You actually ended the year significantly lower on your general fund. You know, according to your policy that you've adopted, the minimum fund balance shouldn't go below $7 million. And it actually went down to 6.2 million for the end of the year. And so obviously, that's something that you try to avoid because, you know, you set the policy in place for a reason and so forth. But and part of that, too, is just that, you know, the general fund had a significant overage as far as the budget, so that did result in you dipping below what you typically would have, so. The next slide just shows the trend on your community investment fund. You know, the community investment fund is very vital to what you're doing as far as helping you fund projects and so forth. It ended the year at 11.8 million compared to 11.5, and a lot of that had to do with the investments did so much better in '23 compared to '22. I believe you had about a $300,000 gain just in the change in fair market. So again, that fund looks very strong, and like I said, provides good funding for what you need for your future projects. Local option sales tax, obviously, is an important fund for you guys also. You know, it's helping pay for the bonds that you've issued for all the projects that have been undertaken so far. As you can see, the fund balance increased from 6.2 to 6.9 million. And part of that is, you know, you still have projects to complete, and you're essentially are collecting roughly, you know, $3 million of revenue, and your bond payments are about 1.9. So at this point, you're in a position where you are increasing that fund balance. But again, I know you have additional projects that you do plan on completing, and that you will require issuing additional debt. But at this point, it's obviously in a good position. Summary of your debt activity for 2023. Overall, your debt increased by 5.7 million. You had issued $8.37 million bonds in '23, which led to the increase. But overall, one, overall, you know, your debt level, you are maintaining not a bad debt level, obviously, because most of these are paid by special assessments and not strictly by property taxes. And also, your community investment fund helps you pay for some of those things, so. One thing I did want to point out, on the '22 bond, you actually didn't have any principal payments due in '23, but that was, and that was just by design, as far as just for cash flow purposes. And then another important fund for you is the waste treatment fund. Overall, you know, it's generating sufficient income for you. The big thing about your waste treatment fund, in 2025, your bond payments will actually go up significantly for about five years. And I know you are doing a rate study, because if you look at revenue, the revenue is pretty stable, but as you see, each year, your operating costs are increasing. So I think it is appropriate to do the rate study to determine what you need to do on that. But even so, you do still have, you still have about $12.6 million cash and investments, so I mean, you are way ahead as far as taking on that additional debt load. And part of that is due to because you had a $7 million bond that was delayed payments, and that was by design, and there was no interest on that, so. A quick snapshot of your investments. Investments ended the year at 53 million compared to 48. And the market overall was actually more favorable in '23, so you actually had a $1.4 million increase in market value compared to '22, which was a little more difficult, and had a $3.1 million loss. And those are just losses essentially on paper because, for the most part, you hang on to your investments till maturity, so you don't actually recognize that loss. But for accounting purposes, you do have to put that in your financial statements and recognize that. And then the last item I have is just a brief summary of some of the departments that had some budget overages. Some of the more significant ones, like the legal fees, were over $159,000. And that actually has been over budgeted like the last couple of years. But I do know that in 2024, you did increase your budget because it does seem like you weren't quite budgeting enough on that side of things. The police department was over significant, and part of that was, you know, payroll-related costs were over $300,000 that you had anticipated. And I know that's another fund that is always just a little bit over as far as payroll-type stuff. But I do know in 2024, again, you did increase your budget, which is probably more realistic for what your needs really are on that side of things, so. And then Public Works also was over budgeted a little bit. Part of that was payroll-related, but also you had taken on additional seal coating projects, which were almost $400,000, which I think were about $200,000 that you had originally planned on that side of things, so. And then the park and rec was over, again, payroll-related, and part of that is, you know, your operations have expanded with all the new facilities you have, and so you have added additional people. And there, again, I know that's a department that you have increased the budget because you recognize the increase in just the normal operating costs, so. Any comments or questions for me?
Doesn't look like it, David.
Well, happy to answer anything you ever have. Like I said, I think the audit went pretty good, other than just the learning curve on everything. I know the finance department is still in process of fully implementing that system, and obviously, it will be a great tool for you once it's completed. All right, that's basically all I have for you.
All right, Audrey.
Just a question, if I remember correctly, you talked to us about budgets that were over, that we should be acknowledging them or doing something during the year versus just being over. Would you just kind of talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you know, basically said in charter, the council has the authority to set the budget, and they have the authority to allocate the budget between departments. And so if a department does go over, that should be a council action to acknowledge that. Or have, take some action in terms of saying, "We've received this additional revenue, this is how we're covering it," or essentially, yeah, recognizing that at the time. Or, I mean, you can't necessarily do things in real time, but, you know, if you're looking at it quarterly, sometimes you should be able to make some adjustments on that sort of thing.
Okay.
I mean, there are some departments that are going over, and some go under, so maybe it's just allocating between departments. But again, that's basically the council that has that authority to do that. Management and administrator and so forth do not have the ability to do that without your authorization.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to accept the 2023 audit.
Almost.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Being done, roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Shuldiz.
Aye.
Eggerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Oss.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you, David. That passed. Next, I'll call on our city engineer, Jared Golgi, in regards to the 2024 assessment roll.
Evening, Mayor and council. In your packets this evening, a couple of things. There is a resolution, but there's also a memo that describes all the assessment objections that were received when the hearing was held in August. And as part of the process, I'll go through each of the objections. And certainly, part of the requirement is that council acts on the objections, right? So I can, we can go, I plan to go one by one, if that's all right with council, and then we'll go through those. And then there is a resolution in your packets this evening, and we'll have to make any adjustments that council does as we go through.
Audrey.
Before we go through the objections, I think there's just some general, general questions. And I know, Leslie, did you bring copies of Justin's email? To me, it would be helpful for us to resolve some of the, just general questions before we go through the objections.
Sure.
Mayor, I have one question before we start.
Yes, Mike.
We had people talk about disability issues. What exactly, where are we at with those? Can we help those individuals with this disability issue?
There's a deferment option in the assessment policy. But if an individual can go to City Hall, and if they qualify for that, that's definitely an option for them.
You know, if they have done that, or can we help them do that, or what's the situation?
I am not sure what the individual situations are, but similar to as we described in August, any resident interested in a deferment can go to City Hall, fill out the information. There's some criteria associated with the deferment requirements. They can fill out the information, and then it can be evaluated to determine whether or not they're eligible. So anybody that has that question, I would encourage them to do so.
Yes, Tom.
Just off on that, is there a date timeline that they need to be in there by the tolls out? Or is it past, or is it still open?
I.
Do you know?
I believe it's at any point, however, and I might defer to other staff, but I believe that's prior to November 1st, they would need to be at City Hall. So if that's something that's being contemplated, certainly by November 1st, they should investigate that.
I can add to that. If they get their application for deferment and it's approved after the assessment roll has been sent over to the county, it will be added to the next year's assessment. So that's why we ask that they get their deferment application in before then, so that it can be acknowledged by the council and approved, and then it would keep it from being rolled into the assessment roll for 2025, onto their property tax.
My first question is about the overall percentage that, there had been a comment that it was at 26%, but if I understand correctly, what you're saying is that, I know that our bonds require 20%. The bonds that we did this year require 20%. Is, what is our percentage this year? Is it 20.3, or what is it?
Yes, it is 20.3. That is in one of the individual assessment objections that we'll be going through a little bit later after. Yep, so 20.3 of the total project cost.
I believe that comment was made about a couple of years ago that we lowered the percentage down to close to 20, is what we did on Sixth Street, if I remember correctly.
Yes, that's correct. There was an assessment hearing. Council at that time decided to reduce the assessments to approximately 20%, which is where they have been since that time, yes.
Justin?
A couple of people have talked about the $4 a month utility improvement charge that municipal utilities collects. What happens with those dollars?
Those dollars are allocated toward the community investment fund, and please jump in if I'm speaking out of turn, or Kyle, if you want to take this.
Thank you, council. So the $4 utility charge is a transfer from wastewater, excuse me, Wilmer Municipal Utilities to the wastewater reserve fund, and ultimately, it does end up in the community investment fund to pay for improvement projects.
Can you explain how that happens? That's not a, like, how does that improve? Yeah, no, well, I don't understand how the transfer happens. I'm saying like, what, you're saying that it ultimately gets used for improvement projects?
Towards bond payments.
Towards bond payments?
Correct.
So walk me through how that would happen, for instance, for residents who have just seen their road worked on this year. They've been paying this $4 fee every month, goes to utilities, it gets transferred.
Sure, for so far, specifically for the 2024 projects, that ultimately, that transfer happens, ends up in the community investment fund. It goes towards overall project total costs, would ultimately lower the assessed amount or the project amount. As you remember, the council did approve bonding for wastewater projects this year. So instead of using the cash, we wanted to make sure we had enough cash in the wastewater reserve fund to help make sure we, it was mentioned earlier, was the increase in bond payment, starting in 2025. So in a roundabout way, there, ultimately, those funds are used to pay for, towards bond payments or towards project costs out of the community investment fund.
Those are paying towards like wastewater projects or not necessarily like the utilities associated with street improvements?
Yes, so it would be towards the wastewater portions of the projects. Can be anything underground, not above ground. Can be anything underground, not above ground. Maybe say it that way, if that helps simplify it.
But it, as I'm looking at some of the math that's been provided for, for, you know, the total cost of this project and the assessments, I'm not seeing at any point like minus X number of dollars from.
Right, I, I need to look at that a little close, closer. I don't have the exact breakout in front of me or tonight. But a lot of it has to do with how we bonded for the projects this year for wastewater, and we're not paying for them with cash, because we want to make sure the city has cash in hand for those balloon payments when the bonds, when those bond payments increase in 2025. So there might not be a specific decrease or identified decrease of the 425,000 out of the community investment fund wastewater treatment there for that transfer. But overall, historically, those funds have been used to pay towards bond payments for projects.
Okay.
We can dig in, absolutely get a more clear cut answer for you if you have any additional questions.
I don't have any addition, more additional questions, but I imagine other, of my colleagues.
On the, the bond rate of 20.3 that we have to have, what happened if a few people pay in? You know, we'll pull them out before that. Does that come affected if we, you know, a few people pay in and we're not at that 20.3%?
If I'm understanding the question correctly, people definitely do have the opportunity to pay their assessments in advance with no interest incurred. So that does, assuming council adopts the assessment role as, as it is, or nearly what it is, those assessments will be approved. So at that point, the 20% is met.
Okay, and then so somebody, you know, pays it all up, it's not gonna effectively, we will go under? Because I believe in, two years ago, it was at 25, and we lowered it down to 22. And that was one of the concerns, you know, too many people would prepay it because the interest rate. So I was just a little confused on that. Thank you.
Audrey?
So there were questions about whether we were using the correct figures and to review the bids. When we approved the bids, I think it was in April or somewhere, are those the figures? They, they're the exact figures that are in this along with engineering costs? And what, what else is added on to?
Yeah, so the total project cost consists of the construction cost, which is the work going on out in the, in the community, administrative testing, engineering, and legal costs associated with the project. So when you add those components together for those projects, the total project amount is the 11 million, 11.665 million.
If you looked at the bid itself that we approved in April, it matches what's on these figures? For the bid?
For the most part, yes. I mean, and what I mean by that is, we've had construction going on for a couple of months. So we know that the, what the bid prices are, we know where construction is. All the projects are trending right at the construction bid prices. So, I mean, they're not going to be identical to the penny, but yes, it's based on the bids that we receive for the project.
The Wilmer Avenue project is a county project.
County led.
County led project, okay. And so there are different funds available that fund those county projects or the state funding or those types of things. But the city still charges assessments based off the same formula that we do if we were doing this street. Is, am I correct?
That's correct, because the city still has costs associated with those roads, even though they're officially county roads.
But we basically use the same formula, even though we're not paying all the costs?
The assessment for mill and overlay projects on a county road or a city street is identical.
Okay, thank you.
I know we've talked about this before, but I keep looking at other communities, especially the counties, and what are they doing to help pay for these assessments? And one of the things that, that jumped out at me that I have checked, rechecked, and rechecked, and I know people hate taxes, but somehow we gotta, I'll start paying for these roads. And I think the wheel tax may be the answer. And I know there's no states, no cities in the state that are doing it this time, but it's legal, according to statute that I've read more than once. And people that I've talked to, the wheel tax is in fact, is legal. Is it a big tax? Not really, but will it help? Because everybody that's on those roads will help pay for those roads. And that's, and that's one of the things the county does.
I have a question on that, because Robert, can, I, I was on the county board when the wheelage tax came on, and I thought the city couldn't do it. Robert, what do you got for us?
We have looked into this extensively since the council meeting in August. What we knew at that point was there is a statute clearly says cities may adopt a wheelage tax. It is very sparse in terms of the details, it has some parameters that are challenging to interpret what they would mean today. But since the last meeting, we've engaged with the state. I think we have stumped a couple of different state agencies, the Department of Transportation. I shouldn't say stumped, but they were unaware that this statute existed, that this authority existed. They could point to no examples of cities that have adopted them. But the fact remains, there is a statute that says the city has the authority to adopt a wheelage tax. And for a city of Wilmer's size, it has the authority to do so without first having a referendum. There again are some parameters. It looks like the city would be limited to a percentage of an equivalent tax that the state imposes. But I think the takeaway from our office is, yes, as Councilmember O'Brien stated, the statute exists, the authority exists. There are likely to be some serious implementation challenges if the city were to go down this road. What I mean by that is, for the counties who have adopted wheelage taxes, there's a clear statutory process for the state to collect the tax in connection with everybody's vehicle registration process and distribute the proceeds to the counties that have adopted the tax. And none of that authority or process or infrastructure is set up for a city tax. So we would likely need to try and work out some sort of arrangement with the state before the city would go to the trouble of adopting it, because it's going to be a really challenging tax to collect otherwise. So with all that said, yes, the legal answer is the statute says the city can adopt this tax. And if the council at some point wishes to explore that, then there's going to be, I think, a significant amount of work to engage with the state to try and make that happen and come up with a process that would work to collect the taxes and get it back to the city.
Do you have anything more, Mike?
No, it's just that, like I say, I mean, I, I drive on all the roads. And why should everybody that live on that street have to pay, be the only ones to pay for the, you know, the upkeep? If I drive on the roads that these trucks coming in the city are driving on all these roads, everybody should pay. And that's one way they do it. And that's one way I've checked with the different counties, and that's the way they do it. One of the ways they do it. But there's gotta be a way to help out with these assessments.
Justin?
Give me a minute, go ahead and call him.
Well, I think Julie wanted to speak, so I'll, I'll go to Julie then, and then I'll come back.
I still need some clarification on the Wilmer Avenue road. And when we share that project with the county, what, what? And I, and it says that we collect it for the county, but how much does the county pay? And why isn't that less than for the residents of Wilmer Avenue?
So none of the assessments are for the county. So they're entirely city assessments. In terms of the total amount, I don't have that in front of me, but similar to the, the previous question, the county roads and city streets that are milled and overlaid are, the assessment policy is the same for both. And the city does have costs associated with the county roads. For example, the storm sewer, catch basins, curb. So it's the county led project, city funds required for the city components of the project. And that doesn't just stop when the project is being constructed. That's through the life of that corridor, so, yep.
I've got Carl. Audrey at that top. So Carl?
So I'd like to go back to that utility improvement charge. So if I heard you right, anything underground, that, that $4 charge goes for anything underground?
Essentially, yes.
And so for this year, we approved a bond, so it's not that, that money is being bonded and that $4 charge is going to the wastewater to help pay those bonds then, or what's?
Still going to the community investment fund.
Is, was the intent of that charge to be used specifically on sewer upgrades, wastewater upgrades? And I'm wondering if, are we using it properly?
Sure, we believe, I had a conversation with staff today. Think way back when, there was an ordinance adopted by council on how that process and how proceedings for that utility charge were laid out. Between late this afternoon and tonight's meeting, I did not have an opportunity to find that specific ordinance. But historically, that is how that fund has been used, is to pay for projects in the community investment fund. The council recalls, historically as well, the community investment fund is how street projects were paid for, bonded for to 2022. So currently on the, on the books for the city is our street improvement, or bonds from 2016 to 2021. Those projects are funded through the community investment fund. I've taken assessments, bonding, utility service charged, other revenue streams to help offset those projects. We got to a point, and just to elaborate a little further, as we moved on and the council took action to ramp up the street improvements throughout the city of Wilmer, viability of that fund to continue funding street projects at that, at certain levels was not viable any longer. So we moved to the, that service or the, the process that we've been using the last three years to fund those projects. So there are still obligations to that fund. We saw in the night presentation at the end of 2023, there was a little over $11 million in there. Those funds for, in most part, are spoken for and are obligated for other projects. So those funds are you being, that utility service charge continues to be used for maintenance or bond payments or other utility projects at the city.
I'm trying to remember, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna follow up with it. In place of a wheelage tax, it might be easier to increase that fee a little bit, double it to $8 a month, and dedicate that specifically to lower assessments in the future, moving forward. That, I think that's a very reasonable request. Way that we can help, it's certainly not going to drop things down significantly for a lot of people, but it's going to help. And if, you know, if we can raise another $420, $500,000, rather than trying to implement a wheelage tax, which sounds very complicated, maybe this is another way we can do that.
I, I've been sitting here thinking about, trying to recall the action that the council took when they initiated the utility improvement charge. Rick and I were on the council. I think that was for sewer and water.
Water lines and sewer. And it started out at $2 a month, and it wasn't meeting the needs, so we raised it to $4. They're supposed to pay specifically the water and sewer lines that were replaced. You know, I did mention, since we got the gas franchise for you at 600 and some thousand, I wanted that dedicated just for street projects. Told that should go into the general funds. We have an option, we could use that just for street projects.
Audrey?
My request on, on that one was that we don't make that decision until we deal with our budget, with how we're going to balance our budget, et cetera, with that. So I just, two things, but there are lots of cities that have been lobbying to be able to do the same thing that the county does, and to charge a half percent sales tax to do streets, et cetera. And that was discussed at the, at the legislature this last year. And I would encourage us to think about lobbying to do that, that, that would be another source of revenue. People who drive on the streets, the people who buy, it's just the, the same, same thing. And that's how the county is doing, you know, doing some of that. And I don't know why cities shouldn't be allowed to do this, that same thing as a way to help fund streets. But my actual question was the concern about whether we're meeting the parameters of, does someone's value of their home really go up by the amount of the assessments? And that challenge, I've seen multiple documents of state documents, and, you know, the league has a document out there and that, that you can't assess more than what the value, and I know that's subjective. But are we exposed to some of the figures that are out there? It's hard to believe that their property values are going up by 15, 17, $20,000. Is that something that we should be concerned about?
Thanks, Councilmember Nelson. This, a similar, similar question came up last year when the assessments were being discussed. And ultimately, we know that the improvements are a benefit to the properties. As your engineer, I'm not going to get into any type of real estate projections or anything like that, I, I, because I can't. But as it was discussed with staff, we're confident that there is a benefit to the property. So the specific amount is subjective. I wish I could give you a yes or no, because I think that's what we're looking for here, but I, I can't do that. I mean, we're confident that there's a benefit. And to the extent, I, I think it could be argued both ways.
Is the city required to be able to prove that?
Thanks, Robert.
What the law says is, you're correct about the special benefit test. That's measured by the market value increase to the value of the property attributable to the project. What the law does not require, because the way you prove that, right, is by an appraisal. Expert appraiser appraising the value of the property before the project, and then doing this to get an after value after the project is completed. The law does not require the city to do an appraisal on the front end before imposing or calculating or approving the final assessments. The law is clear that having a assessment policy in place that is uniform in application across similar classes of property in the community and determines a value for the improvement on a front footage basis is legal, it's presumed legal. If anyone were to appeal the assessment to district court, the city would enter that proceeding with the presumption that its assessment was valid as long as it followed its assessment policy, which is the conclusion of the memo before you, which is that these assessments did. And then it would be up to the party challenging the assessment to produce evidence, probably in the form of an appraisal, to say that, no, the value was, or the benefit value was less than the amount we were assessed. And then the city likely would need to get its own assessment in order to resolve that issue in litigation.
Okay, I've got. Tom, Vicky, Justin. So, Tom?
I'll have two questions. So my second one will go after Justin, if that's all right.
What's that?
I said I have two questions. My first one I'll ask now, and my second one I'll wait till after Justin.
Okay.
Piggybacking on the Wilmer Avenue, when was last time Wilmer Avenue was milled or overlaid or redone? Ever been over the twenty years?
Um, I recall, if I recall correctly, it was late nineties, early two thousands, somewhere in there. I'm not exactly sure. I could probably look that up pretty easily.
We should probably look that up, because if it's, you know, on that twenty year mark, you know, being redone, then we have to recalculate that, I think.
Yeah, also to appreciate that clarification. Um, so all of these assessments were verified that. They were not assessed within that that previous period. We had a couple of residents that were on side streets. Um, and things like that, so that was all reviewed as part of the assessment role, which is in in your packets. Yes.
Vicky?
Um, well, Audrey addressed kind of my questions, but I also think we should look into the half cent sales tax. And I wonder if there's a way to kind of see how we can do that.
Right now, we can't do that because the half sales tax sales tax requires legislative action. And we already have a half cent sales tax on the books right now for all the recreational facilities. And storm sewer and such, and that doesn't go off until another. Ten years? No, nine, nine or eight years. We can ask the legislators at that time, and right now there's a moratorium at the legislation, so. For twenty twenty-five to ask anything, they probably wouldn't do anything.
Justin's next.
I don't have any questions. I want to make some philosophical comments, so you can rest a little bit. I don't want to have any tough questions for you. I think that we have made in the last this like last year and maybe even the last couple of years, we've made some improvements in communication with residents. I think Jared, your team has done a good job of of forecasting what those projects are, being clear about what they can expect, holding open houses, inviting people into conversations. And so I feel confident that if we can improve communication, we can also improve our transparency. And I think that's a struggle right now. I think um, we've heard from multiple residents who have tried to get access to assessment roles and have been turned away. Who have tried to get information from city staff and have been frustrated, and I don't think they've ever gotten some of it. I mean, I think uh, Mr. Matterns, uh, you know, with his experience on the on the utility board is is a government insider at the local level, and the amount of time he had to invest. To get the information that he has, which is still incomplete, I think, from what he's looking for. Is unfortunate, and we can do better. Um, I think it would be great if everyone can understand. This is the total cost of the project. Here's where uh, the grant that we got factors into it. Here's where the utility improvement charge might factor into it. Uh, and here's the total cost that we're assessing uh to the residents that live on the street. We can do a better job on transparency. The other thing I just want to say is I think we can do a better job on the policy overall moving forward. I think the policy worked for a really long time. I think the policy worked up until construction costs skyrocketed, and we're now giving residents bills which follow the policy. But are are larger than we've ever seen before, and did the cost of the road was that larger? The city's seen larger road costs than we've ever seen before too, so it's all understandable. But I agree with Councilmember Childers. We have to do something different and maybe, you know, doubling that utility fee uh in and. Pointing directly at street projects and being able to show our residents, here's where your eight ten dollars a month of utility fee, this is where it's benefiting you. This is where it's going. So that assessments aren't going to disappear, but they're going to come back into that more reasonable rate where you can afford to to pay street assessments when it comes your turn every every thirty years. So those are my philosophical comments.
All right. Um, and then Audrey.
You know, it was brought up a few times about a couple of years ago with Charlotte Street, that's lowering it. If we would do that, brought it down to what we pay, you know, charged for Charlotte a couple of years ago. How would the city come up with that extra money? This is more towards, you know, Leslie and city staff. How could we come up with that money difference of? What the homeowners would pay to what the city would have to pay to keep us in that bond of the twenty twenty point three percent?
I think Robert should answer. It comes down to a legal question, because under the bonding, you. When we went to the bond council, we said we would assess twenty percent, and that's what the bond stayed. And that's what we have done, and that's what the cost comes up to, twenty point three percent. That's rounding air, you know, rounding for footage and things like that, so. I don't know legally if we can say we're going to pay less than our residents are going to be assessed less than twenty percent.
Okay.
Because that's the bond. That's that's what the city agreed to when bond council was here. Baker Tilly, our financial people have looked at it, our city engineers looked at it. Kennedy and Graven, our bond council has looked at it, and they look at what the project costs are, and. That's why they let us bond what we did.
Well, I'm just trying to think, you know, because inflation is so high. I voted no for this past budget. I wasn't comfortable with raising people's taxes, and now here we are again. At assessment hearing where people are complaining about the high taxes. We put more money in the roads last year off of this budget too, but I I don't know how we're gonna please some of these people. I I think the prices are. Are too high for some of these property values that are out there that was like two years ago and. Previous weeks, we need to do something. You know, we have tiffs to business owners building. Apartment buildings. We have people that have been in their homes for thirty forty years, been paying taxes, and now. When they really need the help with the cost of inflation, there's nothing the city can do to really help them out and just say, well. I'm sorry, it's too bad when we did your street. That's the price and, you know, we're as low as we can go on the bond. Isn't. There any type of money that the city could use to help us out?
Kyle, you can jump in if you want to, but I would say that right now we're using all the. Every tool that we have, we are using to reduce the assessments. Now, the only thing we can do differently is we can do bonding differently. And then that means that whatever, if we have a two or three million dollar bond, then it's got to be paid through taxes. Because otherwise, there is no cash. Sitting out there that would be used just strictly for the bond payments. The community investment fund that started how many many years ago, and when the city was making fourteen eighteen percent interest back in. Regonomics days. That helped fund that, but the city was only also doing projects of one million or two million dollars. And that isn't keeping up with our road needs. Two years ago, maybe three years ago, twenty twenty-one, fall of twenty twenty-one. Jared did a presentation on our road construction needs, and it's about fifteen million a year to get us up to a fifty year plan. We've only been spending about eight, not five. On average, over the last three years. And as you see, that's what has been increasing our tax levy. Because our bonds for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, and now twenty twenty-four. Are part of that tax levy increase. And that's the eighty percent of the bonds that we're covering.
So the community investment fund, we can tap into that?
Part of that community fund, as Mr. Box had said, that's already restricted to the prior bonds from twenty twenty sixteen to twenty twenty-one. So those are already restricted funds because we have to have those funds to pay for the bonds that we are currently not taxing.
And then is there any other reserve fund that we do have out there?
Not that's marked for street projects. All of our funds, as as was noted in the budget, we said that we have special revenue funds. We have the airport fund that is dedicated to airport needs. We have the community investment fund, which is dedicated to the bonds that we have out there. And we have uh, we have smaller funds, but we have um, every fund that is listed in our. Audit, which everybody can see because our audit is out there. Those are all dedicated and restricted bu- funds for that particular fund. Now, if you're going to close those funds and then say council can do those kind of things. But then what are you going to fund use for, say, the airport fund if you're going to move their money to the general fund? Years ago, you used to have a fund for RAC. Which was the then a separate special revenue fund. And then council decided, no, let's just move all that money that we get for the access fees to the general fund. So basically, the franchise fee we have for the RAC goes to the general fund. Unfortunately, that we're we don't spend all of that. But it's still just in the general fund.
Which, just for clarification, which we use for capital improvement and?
Yes, we do use it for equipment and we do use it, you know, our rack, you know, if our rack. Budget isn't over the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, we don't get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars anymore. We get about two ten. So each year that decreases too.
And you're correct. When we first initiated the franchise fee and started RAC eight. All the funds stayed in one fund. It was not put in any other.
Yeah, and it wasn't just for capital improvement. It was also the uh personnel you were funding at the same time through that fund.
Okay, Audrey, then Rick.
Thank you. Um, I'm finding myself frustrated. But again, this is the same, we're hanging in the same place we have been for the last couple of years, and um, I think we have to do something about it. I don't believe that the values of the property are going up as much as we're assessing them. I have a concern about that. With that, and um, I don't know that we have any choices right now. We bonded. We have to do at least twenty percent. We already are down to twenty point. Three percent, so we can't lower that that any longer. And um, you know, I I I think we're just, we're here and we're stuck again. And I think that we need to come up with some suggestions or lobbying to try to come up with some different ways to fund streets. And I wasn't talking about local option sales tax. I was talking about the county right now can just vote and do a half a percent. Tax to do roads. That same thing was being lobbied for for cities to do separate, nothing to do with the local option sales tax. There are people who do local option sales tax for streets. That's a whole different situation and a different can of worms, because that's been shut down. This to me is a different kind of opportunity, or maybe we need to look at increasing the the fees for the utilities and dedicating that towards assessments. With that, but um, I I don't know what else to ask. I think we've asked the questions. I don't like the answers. Um, but I think we're here and we need to um. Acknowledge that we're stuck and um. Acknowledge that if we don't like it, we better be doing something between now and next year to do something different.
Rick?
I agree. But going back to the RAC eight. We had, oh, we had the special fund. And I remember one year Mickey Schmidt said we needed to do a couple of parking lots downtown. So we used part of the RAC eight funds for that. And I think we were told by our auditor, we couldn't have all those special funds, so we eliminated a whole bunch of them. So, but I remember a time when back in the sixties and seventies, you'd lived on a um, county state aid. Street, Seventh Street, Wilmer Avenue, Trot Avenue. You didn't, you weren't assessed. The county took care of all of that. And then the tack or the assessment rate was sixty city, forty residents. And it got too high, and then it switched, and it was forty for the city, sixty for the residents. And then I think Mayor Heike at one time had a. Special group. Yeah, and then it. We were in trouble way back then. So, uh, on Wilmer Avenue, did the county assess? Not at all. They use their wheelage tax or F. They don't do that on all their roads, so.
It's my belief that the county has not assessed a city resident for any of their projects.
Out in the county, they do.
That I'm not familiar.
Because I know by Eagle Lake, there's a short little road on the northeast side, and they're all being assessed twenty thousand dollars. No curb and gutter, just the new street road. We do assess too.
Council, where are we going? Are we still going to go down one by one?
I certainly can, yes.
So if I can just recap. From my understanding, just off of different people's comments. So when you were talking your percentages, Rick, so right now we're at eighty twenty. Basically, city's paying eighty, residents are paying twenty percent, twenty point three. Okay? Tom suggested, is there some way that the city can help, that we can take some of that away? Well, the obvious question on that, the answer on that is if we lower, let's say we lower theirs to fifteen. Well, this city's got to pick up the other five percent then, and then that. Is going to have to get spread out to all the citizens. I mean, there's no fund, there's no money out there to help any citizen to take off any of the twenty point three percent. Correct? Okay, okay, so then one possible suggestion is um, adding a four dollars to the utility fee. Which then ultimately. Would go into the overall cost of the project, which would then lessen, we'd have to bond for less, which then changes the amount of the overall assessment. To the citizens. Correct?
Next.
Next year, yeah. Just want to make sure that everybody understands, even though somebody says, you know, we should help them or we should do this, we should do that. These are our choices. Just we we don't have any money to come up with to uh, to help alleviate. Any of that cost. The cost the costs have gone up. That's the cost of doing the road, even if we lowered, let's say, we only did like we did. Fifteen years ago, we did one million in in a street project, which. Got us to where we're at today with not having a lot of roads done back then. That still doesn't take away the cost of what it's going to do. That one road maybe that we fix then for one million. We're still going to have to assess eighty twenty, so that doesn't change any assessment for anybody either. If we lower the street projects we're doing. Correct?
All right, so if, okay, thank you. So in closing your packets this evening is a memo related to all the objections. That were received at the assessment hearing in August. I'll go through these. The first one on the list here, uh, and just by way of reference, I have the property owner name. That roll number is the corresponding number on the assessment roll, where you can find their original assessment, the PID, and then the street addresses. And at this point, I'll just stick with the street addresses as we move forward with this. So the first assessment objection was received from ten oh eight Thirteenth Street Southwest. There were six items or six items that I've listed in the memo. First one was related to the funding sources that should be utilized to reduce assessments, second being um, the discussion related to the benefit not. The benefit not equalling the increase in the property value of the. the benefit not equalling the increase in the property value of the assessment. Um, uh, there was an indication within that obs- assessment objection that property owners were caught off guard by the assessment amounts. Uh, also requested a reduction in the amount of the assessment. And um, requested that the city pursue other options to reduce assessments in the future. And then the following additional objectors were listed on that objection letter. Eight sixteen thirteenth street southwest, nine oh one thirteenth street southwest, ten oh nine, ten sixteen, ten twenty one, eleven oh one thirteenth street southwest, twelve oh nine Grace Avenue, ten seventeen, thirteenth street southwest, eleven fourteen Grace Avenue southwest, eight twenty thirteenth street southwest, ten oh four, ten eighteen, um, thirteenth street southwest, nine ten eleventh street southwest, fourteen thirty six Grace Avenue southwest, eleven oh four Grace Avenue southwest, and the last signing on that objection was twelve oh eight Grace Avenue southwest. As it relates to the uh, first item, the funding sources. We've identified the funding associated with the improvements, which consists of Wilmer Municipal Utilities, the local option sales tax, and the community investment fund. Um, second item was related to the benefit to the property value versus the assessment. Um, and ultimately, like we've discussed here previously, the improvements are a benefit to the property and the assessments have been um, calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy. As it relates to property owners being caught off guard by the assessment amounts, um, notices were mailed to each property owner and the public hearings were published in the West Central Tribune. The first improvement hearing was conducted in November of twenty twenty three, which would have been this, the first notice residents received related to the improvements. The notices were also mailed and published in the West Central Tribune for the August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. Um, assessment hearing. In addition to that, an open house was held on November ninth, twenty twenty three for all property owners to learn more about the project. And as part of that um, open house and the improvement hearing, an estimated amount of the assessments were provided to, to all residents that attended the open house or the public hearing. The assessment amount was item number four. Um, the total project cost, as we've discussed, is eleven point six six five million. The total assessment amount is two million three hundred and sixty seven thousand nine hundred and sixty five dollars and fifty eight cents, which equates to twenty, approximately twenty point three percent of the total project cost. Uh, item five in the objection was relative um, to pursuing other um, methods for reducing assessments in the future. I think we've discussed them at length tonight. Um, however, the assessments included in the assessments rolls in the council packet um, have been calculated according to the city's existing assessment policy. And based on the objections presented and the fact that improvements are a benefit and they're calculated according to the city's assessment policy, the recommendation is that the city assess um, the properties objecting in item number one included in this memo um, as presented. The second item, or the second objection that we received that evening was from fourteen thirty six Grace Avenue Southwest. They objected to the cost of the assessment. And again, the improvements are a benefit to the property and um, have been calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy. And therefore, the recommendation is um.
Do we have to vote individually on each one of these?
Um, you can do them as we go through them, sure, absolutely. Or if, if you're gonna change them, then we would need to change the assessment role. So, we can wait till the end and pick out which ones, if any, that council or have more questions on or wanna change, or?
I just wanted to clarify so that we're all on the same page.
Either way is adequate.
Robert?
Uh, as uh, Mr. Vogi stated, you certainly could take individual actions after uh, the presentation and each objection is concluded. We also have motion language if you wanted to take them as a uh, sort of package uh, when we get to the end of the presentation. Uh, if the council is satisfied with the report, the council could certainly um, dispose of all objections consistent with the memorandum in one motion.
Okay. We'll do that.
Alright, so the third objection was received from nine thirteenth Rice Avenue Southwest. The um, objection indicated that the assessments were significantly higher than last year and objected to the cost of the assessment. So the assessment rates um, were included in a table format for the rates from twenty twenty three, as well as the corresponding rates for twenty twenty four. And you'll note that they're, depending on the item, they're within three to eight percent of the twenty twenty three assessment rates. Um, and then related to the objection of the cost of the assessment, the improvements are a benefit to the property, have been calculated with, in accordance with this, this city's assessment policy. And we're recommending that the city assess the property as presented in the role. Fourth objection uh, was from one thousand fourteen street southwest. Uh, the resident indicated that they were previously assessed on fourteenth street southwest and objected to the cost of the assessment. Um, this one will require a little bit lengthier um, explanation, but it's definitely in, in the council's um, packet this evening. So ultimately, this particular property is a corner lot and it abuts uh, Grace Avenue Southwest. The property was previously assessed on the long side of the lot in twenty twelve for the street and utility reconstruction on fourteenth street southwest. And that assessment amount at the time was seven thousand seven hundred and twenty four dollars and fifty five cents. Um, the amount used in the previous assessment was a hundred and fifteen feet. Um, and the actual frontage is a hundred and thirty feet. Nonetheless, um, the twenty twelve assessment on the long side of the property was based on a twenty or two thousand and five version of the assessment policy. Uh, the current corner lot policy indicates that for street reconstruction and storm sewer related items, one hundred percent of the short side of the, the lot um, be assessed. And then the long side would be thirty percent of that long side length. The sanitary sewer and water replacement assessment items are assessed at a hundred percent of the length of the property where these sewer and water services um, are located. So the current assessment is against the hundred and twenty four point five foot north side. And the adjusted front footage for the street reconstruction and storm sewer related items is a hundred and twenty four point five feet. There are no sanitary sewer or water main assessments on the property since it is serviced from fourteenth street uh, southwest. As a result of all of the analysis related to that, um, the improvements are a benefit to the property and they have been um, assessed in accordance with the city's ex- existing assessment policy. And are recommend, and staff is recommending no change to um, that assessment. The next objection is from twelve oh eight Grace Avenue Southwest. Uh, first part of that objection related to the removal of trees along the project area. The second part was related to the cost of the assessment. And then the third part indicated uh, financial hardship. Related to the trees, the trees were removed um, because they were in conflict with the improvements. The cost of assessments, um, the improvements are a benefit to the property. And were, the assessments were calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy and we recommend that they be assessed as presented. And then lastly, relative to the financial hardship, uh, if the property owner qualifies, they can certainly go to um, City Hall and fill out the paperwork, provide the documentation as we've discussed previously. Um, and if they meet the requirements of a deferment, um, that can be that can be incorporated into the uh, assessment role if the application is completed prior to November first. Next assessment objection was from eleven oh four Grace Avenue Southwest. Also referenced the removal of trees from the project area and the cost of the assessment. The trees were removed because they're in conflict with the improvements. And then as it relates to the cost of the assessment, the improvements are a benefit to the property. They were calculated in accordance with the existing assessment policy. And it is recommended that the city assess the property as presented. Next objection was from twelve oh one Grace Avenue Southwest. Um, resident voiced complaints about access during construction and then objected to the cost of the assessment. As it relates to access, it was definitely difficult during construction. Um, as it relates to the cost of the assessment, uh, they are a benefit to the property and were calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy. And it is recommended that they be pre- assessed as presented. Next objection was from seven twelve thirteenth street southwest. The resident asked if the assessments for the project were being levied to fund school improvements. And then also objected to the cost of the assessment. The first one relative to the funding school improvements, the assessments are not levied to fund school improvements. They are strictly utilized by the city um, as it relates to payment for the project. And the school was also assessed as part of the improvements. As it relates to the cost of the assessment, the improvements are a benefit to the property, were calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy. And we're recommending that they be adopted as presented. Next objection was from seven thirty thirteenth street southwest. The resident objected to the length used in the assessment calculation. Resident believed that it should be twenty five feet or thirty feet, and then also objected to the um, cost of the assessment. This one also is a corner lot. And as previously stated, one hundred percent of the short side is assessed and then thirty percent of the long side. Sanitary sewer and water replacement assessments are assessed at a hundred percent of the length where the sewer and water um, connections are located along the property's footage. Um, this particular property abuts the project on the east side of it. Um, there is fifty feet on the east side, which would be the short side, a hundred and fifty feet on the south side, which is the long. And the adjusted front footage for the street reconstruction and storm sewer related items is fifty feet. And the adjusted front footage used for the water main is fifty feet. There's no sewer assessment included in this one. Um, because the property is serviced from Candy Ohio Avenue. The cost of the assessment, um, one thing that we did wanna go through here, so the, the mailed assessment amount included an amount for sanitary sewer assessment items. And between the time the assessment notice was sent out and the hearing in August, uh, the contractor was working in the area and we were made aware of the property was serviced from Candy Ohio Avenue outside of the construction limits. So the sanitary sewer main and service items, we're recommending be removed from the assessment, which results in a reduction in the amount of sixteen hundred and thirty two dollars and fifty cents. So the revised assessment amount for this particular property that we're, we're recommending is five thousand nine hundred seventy two dollars and fifty cents. So this is the first change to the assessment role that um, staff is recommending as it relates to the construction. Next objection was from a property owner that owns two properties, the first being eight twenty thirteenth street southwest and the second being twelve twenty Grace Avenue Southwest. Uh, the first question from the resident was requesting confirmation that the individuals that signed Mr. Mattern's assess- assessment objection letter um, qualified as a formal objection. And then secondly, the objecting to the cost of the assessment. Um, city attorney has confirmed that by signing the objection letter, um, that does qualify under the statute as an objection. And then as it relates to the cost of the assessment, the improvements were assessed, the improvements are a benefit to the property and were assessed according to the city's assessment policy. And we're recommending that they be assessed as presented. Next objection was from fourteen fifty nine Grace Avenue Southwest. There are a number of components associated with this one. The first being that um, resident indicated that they did not receive mailed notice of the hearing. And ultimately, notices were mailed to each property owner, published in the West Central Tribune um, for the assessment hearing. Second one is related to the uh, concern about access to the assessment role. Um, the assessment roles are available on the um, council packets and at City Hall. Um, so those are available. The method, uh, the third objection was related to the assessing for sanitary sewer water main and services. And through the four twenty nine statute is how the, how the city and other municipalities obtain authority uh, to assess for those improvements. And the assessments for that, those utilities, sanitary sewer water main um, are based on the city's current assessment policy. Next objection was related to the front footage length used for the assessment calculations. The property is in a regular shaped lot and ultimately what that means is the front length and the back length are averaged. And that is how the accessible footage is determined, which is a hundred and eighteen feet um, for this property. The next one was related was an inquiry as to why the use of meter fees are not used to fund improvements. Um, the city, as we've discussed previously this evening, city uses multiple other um, sources to fund the improvements, which include um, utility fees. The next objection within uh, fourteen fifty nine Grace Avenue Southwest objection is related that the assessment policy was being unfairly, the unfairly levied. Uh, the assessments have been calculated according to the city's assessment policy. The next objection was related to the twenty percent assessment of the bond requirements. And the four twenty nine bonds utilized to finance the improvements do require that twenty percent of the improvement cost be assessed uh, against the benefiting property owner, against the benefiting property, properties to pay for the bonds. And then the last objection uh, for the, from that resident was the objection related to the benefit received from the property from the improvement and the cost of the assessment. And as indicated previously, with similar objections, the improvements are a benefit to the property. They were calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy. And it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next objection was from eight twenty six thirteenth street southwest, objecting to the cost of the assessment and also indicating a financial hardship. Similarly, um, to similar objections, the improvements are a benefit to the property. They were assessed in accordance with the city's assessment policy. And we are recommending that they be assessed as presented. As it relates to the hardship, uh, if the property owner does qualify for deferred assessments um, in accordance with the city's assessment policy, uh, would encourage them to stop down at City Hall and pursue that um, prior to November first. The next item are, or the next objection is from Wilmer Avenue. That address is eleven oh six Wilmer Avenue Southwest. That resident objected to the cost of the assessment and we're recommending that the city assess the property as presented since the improvements are a benefit to the property and were calculated according to the city's existing assessment policy. Next objection, twelve fourteen Wilmer Avenue Southeast indicated that they did not receive a notice on, notice on the improvement and objected to the cost of the assessment. Uh, the notices were mailed to property owners uh, for the assessment hearing held on August nineteenth, twenty twenty four, as well as the improvement hearing held on November twentieth, twenty twenty three. Uh, the improvements are a benefit to the property, were calculated according to the city's existing assessment policy. And it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. And it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next, or the next objection, twelve ten Wilmer Avenue Southeast. This individual objected to the project and objected to the cost of the assessment. As it relates to the, the project, the project was reviewed and determined to be in need of a mill and overlay improvement. To preserve the life of the road and prevent a more costly improvement such as reconstruction. The project also includes replacement of structurally deficient curb. And sidewalk driveway aprons and storm sewer castings also required rehabilitation as part of the improvement. As it relates to the objection for the cost of the assessment, improvements are a benefit to the property. Were calculated according to the city's existing assessment policy. And it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next objection is from twelve ten Wilmer Avenue Southwest. Indicating that work was done to a pedestrian ramp and sidewalk. And the improvement has caused additional work for the, the homeowners as it relates to grass repair and cleanup. And also objected to the costly assessment. Some sidewalk improvements were completed as part of ADA improvements associated with the project. Along with the street resurfacing, the removal of concrete required that additional turf. Be disturbed also with the improvements. And that turf is not the responsibility of the property owner to take care of. That will be taken care of as part of the project and the contractor working on the project. As it relates to the objection to the cost, the improvements are a benefit to the property. Calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy and it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next objection, ten twenty nine Wilmer Avenue Southwest. Indicates that the cost of the assessment is more than what it would have caused her to replace her driveway apron. And also provided an estimate for that and objected to the cost of the assessment. The improvement and the associated assessments include both the concrete. Surfacing and other improvements completed as part of the improvement, not solely concrete driveway aprons. And then the improvements as it relates to the cost of the assessment, the improvements are a benefit to the property. Were calculated according to the city's assessment policy. And it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next objection is from twelve oh one ninth Street Southeast. Objected to the cost of the assessment and the improvements are a benefit to the property. Are calculated according to the city's assessment policy and it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next item, fourteen oh one Wilmer Avenue Southwest. Indicated that they did not receive a new driveway apron with the improvement and is requesting a reduction in the assessment amount. And objecting to the cost of the assessment. Since it is a mill and overlay project, structurally deficient concrete, whether it be concrete curb and gutter. Or driveway aprons were replaced, not all of it was replaced throughout the project area. Storm sewer castings were also rehabilitated. And as it relates to the cost of the assessment, the improvements are a benefit to the property. Were calculated according to the city's assessment policy. And it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. Next assessment objection was received from nine twenty Lake Avenue Northwest as it relates to the tenth Street Northwest Improvements Project. The Candy High County H R A objected to the assessment and indicated that they could not be, that they were not eligible for assessment. According to Minnesota statute, four thirty five point one nine, the city does have authority. To assess other governmental units benefited by an, by an improvement. As if the property were privately held. Four thirty five point nineteen makes it, makes the city's authority clear that the H R A can be assessed. Because they are a public body. And that brings that into the fourth thirty five points nineteen statute. And because the improvements are a benefit to the property and have been calculated according to the city's assessment policy. There, it is recommended that they be assessed as presented. That was the final objection that was presented prior to the close of the improvement hearing. Subsequent to the improvement hearing and the public hearing being closed, the assessment hearing. And the assessment hearing being closed, there were a variety of other. Seven other objections that were received following that improvement. Or following the close of the improvement or the assessment hearing. Even though they're received after the close of the assessment hearing, we did include them in your memo. Reviewed them, have not made a formal recommendation as it relates to them because they were received after the hearing. But our review did indicate that all of them were calculated in accordance with the city's assessment policy. And we are recommending that they be assessed as included in the assessment role. So with that, Mayor Council, that concludes all of the assessment objections that were received with the twenty twenty four improvements project. And we are recommending that all of the exceptions, with the exception of seven thirty thirteenth Street Southwest. Where the sanitary sewer service assessment amount was removed from the. We're recommending that the sanitary sewer assessment amount be removed from the assessment. So with that, I will pause for any questions that council might have. Otherwise, there is a resolution enclosed in the packets this evening.
Um, then Carl.
I would like to go and revisit that corner lot. It was number four.
Okay.
So the way I'm looking at it, the, the. Side was done in twenty twelve. And it's a hundred and thirty feet and she was assessed at a hundred and fifteen.
Along fourteen Street Southwest, yes.
Uh, so, and now, this is where the corner lot policy kind of changed. I think this one needs to be readjusted before she was getting paid, you know, almost ninety percent of that. And now we're charging her a hundred percent, you know, on short side. I don't think that's right, you know, charging some, you know. Double for a corner lot. This corner lot policy does need to change again. We need to get this fixed. I'd like to make a recommendation of lowering this one down to thirty percent of the cost on that. Cause then that will put her a little bit over a hundred percent on both streets versus almost up to a hundred percent.
How do we do that? We did. Yeah, I know, but I'm thinking the process out. Did we take it as a motion and vote individually on each one?
Mayor members of the council, if you would look on page two fifty one of your packet, there are two motions suggested. To resolve objections either singularly or. Multiple objections at the same time. And if Councilmember Butterfield is proposing to grant the objection for. The property listed at number four in the memo, you could follow the language at number two. Could be a motion to grant the objection listed in number four of the city engineer's memorandum. And order a reduction to the assessment listed on the roll of, there's a blank dollar. We just have to figure out what that.
Well, I, I'd be willing to wait till they all went through, but I just want to bring that up to a point. I think that's where this, this address we need to be at. You know, we're going to have a discussion at the end after we go through all of it. But I'll bring that up at the end for the motion.
All right, I've got Carl next.
So my question was on the churches. So last year we found out that we had been assessing cemeteries improperly. And do churches fall under that same guideline where, where churches should not be assessed?
I'll defer to the city attorney, but assessments to churches are different than assessments to cemeteries.
Yeah, that's correct. The statutory exemption from assessments was unique to cemetery properties.
Okay, Julie?
Two things. First, I'm going to go off of this, voting on the role. Couldn't we do it like we do? The. The. Included items, like on a consent agenda where, and then we just pull a certain number. And so we could approve all of the ones that we don't have objection to.
That would work procedurally if the county, or excuse me, if the council wanted to follow that procedure.
Okay. That makes, that would make sense to me that if we just approved them all with the exception of some that we're going to talk further about. And then possibly do an amendment to, okay?
I would like that.
Okay, so then my second thing. I, I know most people's concern and objections were to cost. And we've already talked where we're at on that and where the money has to come from. But there was numerous. Comments about not getting noticed. So I'm, I'm thinking, okay, that's something we can fix. That's something we can address. So besides at the newspaper, do we, do we put it on the city's website? That there's going to be a public hearing? So it was on the city's website? Is it on our Facebook page? That there was going to be a hearing, so like in November on what those, those projects were? Okay, and do we do anything on the radio? Say like if you're talking on open mic. Is there other ways on the radio that we are notifying people? Can we make an effort to do that? It's just to take away one less aggravation to a citizen. Just trying to think of how we could get that word out.
Audrey?
Thank you, Mary Reese. My question is on the one that Councilmember Butterfield brought up. So they were assessed in two thousand and twelve? What is their policy? They can't be assessed more than once every twenty years? So this is less than twenty years. But your comment was that the policy changed so that we could assess them?
They were only assessed for one side in twenty twenty twelve.
Right, but we didn't, we didn't do the street on both sides, did we?
No.
No. But now we're looking to assess.
The side of budding the improvement in.
Just the one side?
Yes.
Not the other side?
Correct.
So we're following our policy?
Yes.
On, okay.
Just to get back at Councilmember Nelson on that, before it was about ninety percent. On the old policy, on this new policy, they're paying, you know, the hundred percent. So they're, it's being double dipped in twenty years, in my opinion.
Justin?
I have a question. We've had a couple people who have objected, you know, to the costs and stated that they couldn't pay it, that they have a hardship. And we've talked about, hopefully, I'll advertise it again if anyone's out there and they're looking, haven't heard it yet. You can apply for a deferred assessment based on hardship, but you have to meet certain criteria. That works for individuals. What about organizations? I know, you know, for instance, you know, as Councilmember Sholto's pointed out, there were churches listed here. What if a church doesn't have that money? What if a nonprofit, hopefully the H R A will be okay, but what happens for organizations? Is there any policy or procedure that they can go through for hardship?
I don't recall specifically what the assessment policy says as it relates to that, but we'll certainly look into that. I don't know if it's individual specific or, or not, so.
Anyone else on staff could speak to that because. It seems to be relevant.
It's limited to homestead property. And there's four criteria that would qualify someone for consideration for a deferment. All deferments would need to be approved by the council, which is why formally applying in time for the council to be able to approve a deferment. No later than, what would it be, October twenty first? And the last council meeting would be the twenty first. I think so, but the last time for the council to approve a deferment before it would go on the. Roles of the county certified for next year would be the October twenty first meeting. So it's important to apply to the city in time for that to be on your agenda for October twenty first. The four criteria for consideration of deferment would be if the property is owned by a person sixty five years of age or older. Is owned by a person who is retired by virtue of a permanent and total disability. Is owned by a member of the Minnesota National Guard or other military reserves. Who has been ordered into active military service. Or if there are other exceptional and unusual circumstances not covered by the first three that the council could consider. So there is a little flexibility built in.
Okay, so that certainly speaks to some of the objections we've heard. But as far as the two congregations, the H R A, it's not a homestead property. There's no objection, no valid objection for them.
No, no, no. Qualify for different.
Hardship, yes, thank you, appreciate the clarification.
So at this point, are we looking for a? To Julie's comment?
Mayor, I guess my suggestion would be consistent with the suggestion by Counselor Osmus. Would be, I'm kind of keeping track of the list of any specific properties addressed in the memorandum that the council would like to address separately. With the idea that once that list is completed, the council could take action on the remaining parcels that have not been specifically requested to be removed. And then we can come back one by one on the ones that happened.
We should have a, an understanding of what parcels we're talking about then.
So far, my list has one parcel, it's line four in the engineer's memorandum.
And the other one that I would note, council is number nine, which is the reduction. Related to the removal of the sanitary sewer component of the assessment. So the motion, I believe that be appropriate is to deny the objections. Listed in the memo with the exception of four and nine.
Mike?
Yes, Julie?
Is it just the, for four, was it just that there, they had the previous assessment in two thousand and twelve? Or are we talking about the corner lots? Cause then we'd have another one. Correct?
Councilman Osmus, I was talking about two thousand and twelve, they were assessed at about ninety percent of the street value. Now they're being assessed a hundred percent on this new one. I would be making the motion to bring in at thirty percent of, of their total cost. Their total cost for the assessment was ten thousand dollars. I'd be making it to be brought down to.
We'll get, we'll get to that in the specifics on that.
Fine, I'm just bringing me up.
But I'm thinking, is it just that it's the corner lot?
Yeah, it's the corner lot because they were.
Another one that was a corner lot. So are we also going to include that one?
I don't think the other corner lot had the.
Previous two thousand and twelve assessment or a previous assessment? That was the question, okay. So we're not including the other one?
No.
Okay. I'll make a motion to, to accept the role. I'll make a motion to in um to accept the role as presented in the memo of removing number four and number nine.
Second, here we got a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, Mayor, if I can just uh make a suggested edit to the motion, which would be to resolve the objections consistent with the engineer's memo with the exception of lines four and line nine.
I'm open to that, however, it should be worded.
Isn't that what you said?
I thought so. Sounded very familiar.
So we're passing on the ones?
So by taking this action, the council will be resolving all the objections except for lines four and lines nine, and you'll have to come back for specific motions on each of those.
Okay, but does she have to? We didn't have a sec-
Yeah, we did.
We had a second, so we should pull that back?
Oh, you're fine. If if everyone understands what the motion is, I think you can move forward to vote on this motion.
Okay. All right. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
And Sholdes?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Okay, that passes. We do four and nine.
Good.
I need a motion on those two. Justin?
Can I inquire, um I'm grateful for Councilmember Butterfield bringing up line four. I had the same thought that we we ran into this last year. We recognized it was unfair to assess uh, you know, a corner lot basically by the worst of both policies. They they were getting hit by the worst, you know, of it both times. And I'm just wondering, what did we do last year with that? Is that something that we can have quick access to? 'Cause I'd like to remain consistent with that. And if it turns out to be thirty percent, is that-
Just a reduction of thirty percent, so they actually paid seventy percent. And that was my fault on my wording last year. That's why I'm changing the wording this year, that they're only gonna pay thirty percent, not a thirty percent reduction.
So last-
So if the bill will be ten thousand dollars, they'll be paying three thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars, that they're paying thirty, thirty percent.
But last year, we did a thirty percent reduction, and now you wanna do a seventy percent reduction?
Yeah, they were already-
You can't support that.
Ten years ago, they were at a ninety percent. They paid ninety percent of it.
I wanna remain consistent, but.
Last year was my fault on my wording. This year, I'm just kinda re-changing my wording and make it fair for the homeowner. You know, uh, they're still paying over a hundred percent. If you look at the eighty percent and the thirty percent, that's a hundred and ten percent that they're paying. You know, uh, and that's why this corner lot, we really need to get this problem fixed.
I guess I would say that this council recently looked at the corner lot policy this year and affirmed it again. Uh, I understand when it comes up for assessments in the way that it does, like it does for number four, like I'm okay to make um an adjustment, but I wanna remain consistent with that and would would love to be able to see the minutes of that meeting if we can pull that up quickly.
And just clarification on that. And I know this probably this complicated the calculation, but in two thousand twelve when they were assessed, would it be correct to say that they were only assessed on a hundred and fifteen feet when the actual footage was a hundred and thirty feet? So they actually had a reduction of five feet?
Fifteen feet.
Um, sorry, yes. Yeah, that's good math.
That's correct. We verified the the footage along the previously assessed street and didn't find any indication as to why it went from a hundred and thirty to a hundred and-
So they got a break in two thousand twelve, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
But yeah, they still paid almost ninety percent, you know, of their square footage on that one. You know, if you do the math, it's eighty-eight point four six percent square, you know, of the foot they did.
Yes, Justin?
Um, I'm looking at city staff. Is it possible to get the minutes from last year's meeting tonight? Okay, I thought you might be. Can we move on to number nine and come back to number four?
Sure.
I would move to accept the recommendation of Mr. Vogi that he reduce that assessment by the-
To the five thousand nine hundred and seventy-two fifty?
Yes.
Here we got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
And Fagerly?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Now we-
We take a break while we look that up?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, so we need a motion on number four.
I'd like to make the motion that we reduce uh twenty twenty-four's twenty twenty-five assessment rule by thirty percent to be consistent with what we did last year on the corner lot.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion. Audrey?
So am I correct? In two thousand twelve, they assessed the wrong amount of property? So they got a break in two thousand twelve for they didn't do the whole, whole thing?
Yeah, so as a matter of clarification, in twenty twenty twelve, the improvement that was completed is a hundred and thirty feet long. Based on the records that we obtained from the assessment at that point, they were assessed for a hundred and fifteen feet. So there's an uh fifteen-foot reduction that came into play somewhere.
So is what we're doing fair? Well, I'm just, I'm just saying.
I I understand the question. I I just, it is consistent with what was done last year, um based on what I heard in the motion. I it's, in twenty twenty twelve, I, there was no backup documentation as to where, why. It could have been a discussion like this. I don't know um why it was a hundred and fifteen when it's actually measured at a hundred and thirty. So there was a fifteen-foot reduction.
Basically, we're doing this 'cause they were assessed in two thousand twelve.
The portion assessed in two thousand and twelve isn't proposed to be assessed in twenty twenty four.
With the change that we're making?
Right.
With this motion?
The current assessment for that property is nine thousand seven hundred and eleven dollars. Based on the motion on the floor currently, that assessment would be six thousand seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy cents, which is a thirty percent reduction.
That's what I was going for, was what.
Here we got a motion and a second. Justin?
Yeah, thanks. Just to clarify, 'cause I feel like why I think this is justified is that in twenty twelve, we had a corner lot policy that stated that, you know, one side was gonna be charged for the the full hundred percent, and then you'd get a reduction on the other side of your property if you live on that corner property. The street that they had done was at the hundred percent. And we changed our policy and flipped those around, right? 'Cause now it's you're gonna get charged a hundred percent on the short side, giving the corner lot, uh, you know, maybe a little bit of a benefit that you earned this, you know, you're not gonna be charged a hundred percent on the long side. And now they're getting hit with a hundred percent charge again as we flipped those around. So that's why, that's why I was supportive of the thirty percent reduction last year, and will be happy to support it again tonight.
And I just was questioning that they didn't get the full assess, they didn't get assessed on the full amount in two thousand twelve.
Right, which also could have been engineering error, someone entered a number wrong. I like to blame the engineer.
Okay, we're done with discussion, or are you? All right? We will uh roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
And Osmus?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thanks, council.
Thank you, Jared.
A question, do we need to adopt the role, or have we already done that?
Uh, yes, good point. The uh council has now resolved all of the objections that were filed. You do need a motion and uh to adopt that resolution approving the assessment role.
So moved.
Second. Here we got a motion and a second to adopt the twenty twenty-four assessment role. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Sholdes?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
And Butterfield?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That pass. All right, um, next. Approval purchase agreement with Kira. Robert?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Um, the next four items on your agenda all relate to the uh Kira care center transactions, and these are matters that have been before the council um with a couple twists of new developments. So if it's okay, I will give you kind of the overview, and then if you'd like, I can do a shorter uh explanation when we get to each item. Previously, the council has adopted a resolution approving in concept a proposal from Centra Care to uh turn the care center business over and transfer operations to Kira. And uh since the city is the owner of that real estate and is leasing the real estate to Centra Care under the operating lease for the entire Rice Memorial Hospital system, um as owner of the real estate, the city would need to then uh transfer the real estate to Kira in order to complete that transfer. And this has come to the council previously. The council initially adopted a resolution approving of the requested uh transfer and uh uh transfer of the property from Centra Care to Kira. It also uh approved the uh a series of steps that would be necessary. One of those steps would be a lease amendment to remove the care center property from the operating lease that the city has with Centra Care. So Centra Care would continue under the lease for all of the Rice Memorial Hospital properties, except the care center would be removed from the lease so that the city, as owner of that property, would be able to transfer it to Kira. Um, that has all uh come before the council and then been approved in concept. Um, the city also has taken the step of passing an ordinance authorizing the sale of the care center property to Kira. That's a charter required step for any sale of real property. And that ordinance was conditioned on the city approving a purchase agreement with Kira. Um, the first item on your agenda tonight is that purchase agreement. Um, city uh purchase agreement with Kira to uh sell and transfer the real estate for the care center to Kira, consistent with the council's previous approvals. The second, uh, the second item, I'll just run through all of them and I'll come back one by one. The second item on your agenda is uh the lease amendment that would remove the care center from the city's operating lease with Rice Memorial Hospital. And again, those those two items, I think, are uh foreseen and previously contemplated by the city and the approvals granted to date. The ask the city had, you'll notice the purchase price for the uh care center property in the purchase agreement is nominal. The city's ask of Centra Care to go along with this transfer was that, in addition to the care center, that the properties owned by Rice Home Medical, one in Wilmer, one in Redwood Falls, also be removed from the lease and turned back to the city. Um, the third item, item nine E on your agenda, is a resolution that will prove of the acquisition of those properties. It would be uh conveyed Rice Home Medical is under the control of Centra Care under the lease. Um, removing them from the lease is one step that's accomplished in the lease amendment, which is an item D in your agenda. Item E approves Rice Home Medical then transferring title to those properties back to the city. So the city will both be removing them from the lease and taking title back from Rice Home Medical. Um, I think all of that has been uh understood in the approvals the city has granted today. What uh we are also doing tonight, or what the agenda items contemplate, would be addressing another situation that we've learned about since the council last acted. And that is that the Rice Home Medical properties, again, one in Redwood Falls and one in Wilmer, are currently under lease from Rice Home Medical to Corner Home Medical. Um, they are also subject to an option to purchase by, I think, individuals associated with, or entities associated with Corner Home Medical. When the city accepts title to those properties back, it's also being asked to accept Centra Care's, or excuse me, Rice Home Medical's obligations under those leases. The obligations are essentially to continue leasing or our rent payments contemplated. Um, and then on the option, accepting Rice Home Medical's obligations under the option, which are to sell the properties for value uh to the entities affiliated with Corner Home Medical. Um, the twist is that the option that Rice Home Medical has agreed to with the Corner Home Medical entities uh contemplates the sale of both properties, and the prospective buyer is only interested in purchasing the Redwood Falls property. Um, there is an appraisal process built into the option. The purchase price was going to fall somewhere between one point eight million and two point four million, depending on the outcome of that appraisal process. We're now talking about not both properties, but just the Redwood Falls property. And uh the city is in negotiations on a new purchase price. So there's a series of steps that that will unfold here. And when I mentioned those purchase prices, those would be payable to the owner of the Rice Home Medical properties. Currently, that's Rice Home Medical. That those properties will be transferred to the city, and the city will accept Rice Home Medical's rights under those agreements, with the expectation that a a new agreement will be reached with the Corner Home Medical's entities on a purchase price that they would pay to the city for the sale of the Redwood Falls property. So those last steps, accepting the assumption of the assignment of lease and option, are addressed in the second half of the resolution in item E. And uh item F would then be an ordinance authorizing the sale of that Redwood Falls property to the Corner Home Medical-related entities. Future actions that we cannot accomplish tonight that would come back before you would obviously be the public hearing on the ordinance authorizing the sale of that Redwood Falls property, um as well as the amendments to the uh lease with the Corner Home Medical entities to remove the Wilmer property uh and the option agreement to remove the Wilmer property from that agreement as well. So that's the context. Um, most of this, I think, is consistent with the council's understanding that it has approved this transition previously with the new developments related to the lease and option uh on the Corner Home Medical uh properties, or the properties that are leased to Corner Home Medical. So with that, um I'll pause for any questions, and I can take these one by one.
All right. Any questions? Rick?
Who is Corner Home Medical?
Steinhaus? Out of the cities.
So they want to buy Redwood Falls?
Yes.
But not the Wilmer one?
They have moved out of the Wilmer one, and they are at the Old Habitat for Humanity on First Street, where they moved to.
Council, the up chat of if the council were to approve all of the resolutions tonight and follow through with the adoption of the ordinance and approval of a purchase agreement for the sale of the Redwood Falls property would be that you would be paid a purchase price to be determined for the Redwood Falls property, and you would own the Wilmer property for conveyance to a developer or other interested party when the time is right.
So what we need right now is a motion to purchase with Kira.
The first item, item nine C on the agenda, is simply to approve the purchase agreement with Kira. I mentioned that's for a nominal price. For the transfer of the care center property to Kira, consistent with previous approvals, consistent with the ordinance adopted. And I will point out in the purchase agreement, one request that the planning commission had was that the city include a covenant in this deed conveying the property that Kira will continue to operate the long-term care facility on that premises for the next five years, and they have agreed to that. That is included in the purchase agreement. So what be, you recommending would be the council approve the purchase agreement between the city and Kira for the sale and transfer of the care center property.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion, and we have a second discussion. Rick?
So will they be paying property tax on that? Is there a nonprofit?
No, this is Kira.
This one's on Kira.
We're talking about Kira. We're on C.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
I'm ahead of myself.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
And O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
The motion passes.
Just clarification. Kira is operating it right now.
Correct.
So will they be paying property tax?
They will, obviously, when this transaction closes, they would be the fee owner of the property. Whether they, as a nonprofit healthcare provider, essentially are subject to property tax, I have not researched.
So it won't be a payment in lieu of taxes. It'll be actual.
So.
Spread out among the school, county.
Maybe.
However, the assessed tax.
All right.
Okay, all right. The second item related to the care center is item nine D on the agenda. That's to approve a lease amendment. The lease amendment removes the care center property together with the two Rice Home Medical parcels from the operating lease, as described. And this one, again, is entirely consistent with the previous council approvals.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We got a motion and a second discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
And Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
All right, the third care center-related item is item nine E. This is to approve the acquisition of the two Rice Home Medical properties and agree to assume the owner's obligations under the existing lease and option agreements for those properties.
So moved.
Second. We got a motion and a second discussion. Thing done. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
And Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes.
And the final item related to the care center transactions is the introduction of an ordinance to sell, authorizing the sale of the Redwood Falls parcel, currently owned by Rice Home Medical, but will be conveyed to the city. This item will be contingent on the city approving a purchase agreement at a future meeting. This is just a set of public hearing on the ordinance as introduced for October seventh, and discussions will continue about a purchase agreement, purchase price, and the needed amendments to the lease and option that the city will be assessor.
Make that motion.
Second. We got a motion and a second. Discussion. Hearing done. Roll call.
Councilmember Sholdes.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
And Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
That passes. Thank you, Mr. Scott.
Leading us through that.
Next, Frank. Donation of fire prevention smoke escape house trailer.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like before you use a resolution to approve accepting a donation from the city of Renville of a fire prevention slash smoke escape post trailer. That was approached about two weeks ago from the Renville Fire Chief. That said that they had this trailer that they don't utilize, that we could utilize it more. It's used for fire prevention, to teach kids how to get out of small field rooms, and adults both. I believe in your packet, there's a couple of pictures. The trailer is a two thousand two trailer. It was donated to Renville Fire from Eden Prairie Fire Department, I believe, about four years ago. They have used it a little bit, but they didn't, they didn't use it as much as they thought they would. I did go down, take a look at it last week, and it's in very nice condition. So I am asking you to accept the donation of the trailer.
Who do approve?
Second.
I just have a question for you. Chief, is there going to be any foreseeable maintenance we're going to need on this? Is this going to be, you know, good to go, you know, besides like tires, but I mean, like electrical or anything like that?
I, I don't foresee anything. We may do some updating of it later on, but nothing major. They say everything, everything works perfect. So as of this point, we're good to go.
Justin?
I was just going to say, theoretically, you could have been item nine A on the agenda tonight. Did you insult the city administrator or lose a bet?
No, I was thinking that earlier, too.
Hey, do, we don't have Audrey.
I, I'm just curious why they're donating it and why they didn't use it, or why they didn't share it with other fire departments down in their neighborhood.
I, I believe they did. They did share it a little bit. They just don't do a lot of stuff like that compared to what we do. And our plan is also to share it throughout the county so other departments can use it.
Okay. Thank you.
Mike and Julie, Andrew.
Just like to say thank you to them for the donation.
I was, I was pretty excited. The fire chief and I are pretty good friends. And he was excited to call me and say, hey, I got this opportunity for you. Okay, we'll come and get it if we can, so.
Julie?
Where are we storing it? It's bigger than I thought it would be.
Bigger than I thought it would be. We are going to start it all at the old wastewater treatment plant. We've made arrangements out there. There's one place inside. But it's been stored outside for twenty-two years and still in really good condition, so we're hoping to get a couple more years out of that.
Rick?
Try. I don't know. Thirty-five feet long, so maybe.
All right. We've got a motion. And we've got a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmond.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
And Sholdes.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero noes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Any community pride announcements? Tom?
Julie can go first.
I'll just tell people, we'll probably remind him again on October seventh, but at the fire department on October eighth, there is going to be an open house. That's where they have their reading night with the firefighters, and they'll have some supper there and just a fun night to see all the firefighting equipment. So mark that on your calendars.
All right. All right, then, Justin?
I have, I have two, actually. Just a reminder to the public to please complete the comprehensive plan survey. This is your chance to share your vision for Wilmer's future on land use, housing, economic development, and recreation. You can take the surveys up until September thirtieth. If you go to Wilmer MN.gov, there'll be a pop-up in the right corner, and you can take the survey there. It's a fairly short survey. It'll only take a couple minutes to do that. And then, secondly, I'd love to give a shout out to Linda Whitman, who is retired, just retired last Friday after thirty-nine years at the law enforcement center. It was a very different place out there today. Her cubicle being empty, so thirty-nine years Linda worked out there, and so she will be missed.
Ricky?
I have an idea for a mayor. I think, I'm wondering if you could have a comprehensive assessment policy task force put together to help create a comprehensive policy that would benefit us. Something to think about.
Okay, I got it. All right. Justin?
Thank you. I was out of town this weekend, but heard wonderful things about Welcome Day on Saturday. And I know you were there, and I don't know, Pablo, if you have anything to share with us about favorite moment or anything like that? Yeah.
Yeah, great turnout. Turnout of displayers, turnout of people attending.
Yeah, no, just, I've heard such great feedback from it, and just proud to be part of Wilmer, that gets to hold a big, wonderful day like that.
It was, it was a special day, special afternoon. Mike?
We just found out that Beth Matheson, who is Minister of Secretariat, Municipal Utilities, is going to retire after forty-four years in January. Forty-four years.
Do you have something, Tom?
I would just like to make a recommendation that we kind of look at our dog ordinance that we have and get that on the agenda here in next month or so. We've had increased dog bites, and just last week, we had a dog bite by a dog that was not vaccinated. And that person was going through headaches with the Minnesota Health Department on what they can do to get get rabies vaccinations, big runaround. So I think we really need to look at our dog at policy here in Wilmer yet. Because they've really been going up this year. I don't know how many we've had this year now so far, at least four or five that I know. So I think that's one thing we have to do, is take a look at that.
That's coming from a mail carrier?
Anything else?
Add to that, there are two municipal utilities personnel were bitten also just recently.
All right, anything else? I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Adjourned.